Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you here to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm glad everybody can make it here this morning before the next big snowstorm comes to South Dakota to help us celebrate spring.[47.28][47.28](Laughter.) I'd also like to mention that we're a little short-staffed this morning. Carol Dever is home with influenza, so we wish her the best. I think she's watching. And Craig Dewey is out today on PTO, so the rest of us are going to muddle through the best that we can. I'd like to remind everybody to silence their cellphones and that meeting documents are available for review down on the end. And if you need a listening device, we'll rustle up somebody who can find one for you. I'd entertain a motion to amend our agenda.
Chairperson, we would like to move to amend the agenda to remove Item 16, an item to consider a resolution adopting the Minnehaha County Highway Access Management Policy; to remove Item 20, an item to authorize the chairperson to sign an extension to the Stockpile Lease Agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation; to remove Item 18, an item to give a briefing in the county planning and city planning departments on the proposed peri-nature area easements; and to remove Item 17, an item to consider a resolution to establish a highway facility and maintenance fund.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Oops, now I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
That's what I do.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item is to entertain a motion to approve the commission meeting minutes from April 2nd, 2019.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $570,402.26.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There are several reports there for review. There's a highway construction project update for April 2019. Shows you that we're right at the beginning of construction season. There's a lot of reports there. Really great information, I think. Minnehaha County Public Defender's Office 2018 annual report. I think we'll be hearing from them a little bit later. And the Mobile Crisis Team annual statistics. Takes us to Item 5, Personnel Actions. I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to second item, Special Commission Action to Approve the Conversion of One Deputy/Senior Public Defender Position to a Senior Trial Attorney Position. Carrie Dever?
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. This is a request to convert an existing position, so it's not a request for a new position. And Tracy Smith and Mike Miller are here to explain the request. Good morning.
Good morning. We're seeking authorization to promote one of our senior deputy public defenders to a position of senior trial attorney. We have 26 attorneys at this point in time, and in their official capacity, in addition to carrying caseloads, they are also assisting us with supervising the office. We recently changed how we are processing our cases within our department, separating out our felony division. With the departure of Bo Bluen, we've recently been advertising internally to fill his position. With the two changes and the recent hiring, excuse me, interviewing for his position, we've had several good candidates. We think it would be very beneficial with supervising the other attorneys in the office to add another senior trial attorney to our department. The reason for the change in how we assign felonies is to assist with case processing. It would also help with retention and turnover, allowing attorneys to work on lower-level felonies and dispose of them more quickly while allowing more senior attorneys more time to work on those harder cases. So we're asking the commission at this time to allow us to use savings that we've had from not hiring the attorney that was authorized in January of this year that still hasn't been filled to allow us to use the savings from that to change one of our attorneys to a senior-level attorney.
Questions for Tracy?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Takes us to Item C, Consider a Motion to Approve the 2019 Affirmative Action Plan. Jen, good morning.
Good morning. Jen Adix with Human Resources. This morning, I'm going to give you just a brief overview of our data analysis from our annual affirmative action plan and then also ask for formal approval of the plan. Given the length of this document, you were sent an electronic copy to review. Additionally, we've had the department heads review and our diversity committee met a couple of weeks ago, and we discussed the plan in pretty great detail. As you know, the Minnehaha County federal contracts require that we prepare an affirmative action plan, and in this plan, we do data analysis to take a look at the county employee demographics as compared to the demographics from applicants that we could hire from our reasonable recruitment area, which is the Sioux Falls Metropolitan Statistical Area for people in four protected groups: females, minorities, individuals with disabilities, and protected veterans. And what we hope to find is that as a federal contractor, we're employing people in those protected groups at about the same rate that's available to us from our external workforce. When we conduct our analysis, if we identify areas that do not meet up with what is available to us to hire from our external group, we establish goals to try to increase our percentages in those protected groups. However, this is not a quota. We're not penalized if we don't employ the same number of people. But if we know that we have underutilization in a particular area, then we make efforts through our advertising and through our recruitment processes to try to positively impact that underutilization. So we're going to take a look at a couple different charts. The first chart is a comparison of the minorities employed at the county as compared to what's available to us from our external workforce. And to make sure that we are measuring jobs that are similar in style, they are grouped by job group. And the first group of columns is for our admin support group. The first grayed-out column is our workforce availability, what's available to us to hire from the outside. The Office of Federal Contract Compliance Programs has said that it's statistically unlikely that we're going to have a one-to-one ratio of what's available to us, so they've asked federal contractors to compare it an 80%. And that's that red column. That's what our goal is, is the 80%. The blue column, the third one, is where we're at currently. And the last grayed-out column is where we were at last year, just to use as a comparison. So for our admin support group, you can see that we exceed both our 80% and full utilization. In our officials and administrators job group, we are underutilized. However, it's a smaller job group. Hiring one minority in this job group would offset that underutilization. For professionals and paraprofessionals, we meet our goal of 80%. We're slightly underutilized in terms of full utilization. For protective services, we exceed service maintenance. We exceed both 80% and full. And then in our last two job groups, skilled craft and technicians, we are slightly underutilized as well. These are both small job groups. In both instances, if we were able to hire one minority, that would offset our underutilization. Our next graph is set up the same way, and it's the comparison of the females employed at the county as compared to our external workforce. So again, we're looking at that third column. It's orange as compared to the red column. So in the first job group, obviously, we exceed both our 80% and full utilization. Officials, we exceed. In paraprofessionals and professionals, we exceed our 80% goal. We don't quite align with full utilization. For protective services, we exceed both 80% and full. In service maintenance, it does look like we are rather underutilized. This is a very small job group. There's only seven people in this job group. So we are underutilized, though, and so that's an area where we've set a goal to try to impact that if we do have the opportunity through new job postings. Skilled craft, we are underutilized, a small job group again. If we were to hire only one female, that would offset that underutilization. And our final group is technicians. Again, that looks like we're more significantly underutilized, smaller job group. We don't really have much recruitment activity in there, so not much of an opportunity to even impact that underutilization. That is another area where we set a goal. The next chart is a look at our protected veterans who work for the organization, and this is a little bit different. We have a national benchmark that's set for us, and we only look at the workforce as a whole. And the national benchmark is 6.4%. The first group of columns, that's the red column. In the second green column, that's where we're at currently. 9.44% of the employees at county are a protected veteran, which is up from last year. We were at 8.25 last year. Currently, we have 49 full-time employees who are protected vets who work for the company. We have other veterans, though, who do work here who don't fall into one of those protected categories or maybe chose not to identify as a protected veteran, just as a veteran in general. So we pulled those numbers because I think it's pretty impressive. We have 89 full-time people who work for the county who are a veteran. We have an additional 19 part-time people, so all total, the county employs 109 veterans, which is up from last year. We were at 94 last year. And the final column we're going to look at, or the final graph, is the individuals with disabilities who work at the county. This, again, has a national benchmark that's set for us, 7%, and that has to be applied by job group again. So in our admin support job group, we exceed 7%. Officials and administrators, we are underutilized, but because it's a smaller job group, one individual with a disability would offset that underutilization. Paraprofessionals and professionals, we are slightly underutilized. Protected services, we meet our goal. We exceed that. Service maintenance, again, it looks like we're underutilized, but with only seven people, just hiring one person would offset that underutilization. And then in our last two groups, skilled craft and technicians, we exceed the national benchmark in both of those. That, again, is just a really high-level overview of the information that we got back once we conducted the analysis and put together the affirmative action plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, I would like to request formal approval of the plan, and then once I have approval, I'll ask for all elected officials to sign as their show of support.
Commissioner Barth?
Could you define the protected veteran status? How does that differ from, say, other veterans?
Yep, there's four different categories where you might fall into to be a protected veteran. If you've served during a certain time, if you have, perhaps you were a disabled veteran, if you're recently separated within the last three years. So you may or may not fall into one of those categories, but in terms of just the affirmative action plan, that's all we're supposed to analyze for that. But we pulled the other numbers because we think it's just impressive to know how many veterans do work at the county. And it is voluntary, too, so they may choose not to share the information. If I'm a disabled veteran, perhaps I don't want to share that with my employer, and it's voluntary. So I may say I'm a vet and not choose to identify as protected.
If I may, Madam Chair, you may also not want to define yourself as disabled.
Mm-hmm.
So what is the definition there? Do you have to have some official designation on that?
That's interesting you bring it up. A couple of years ago, the way that we submit one of our veterans' reports for the county, we used to have to specify what type of protected category, what type of protected veteran a veteran fell into. And now, just to maintain anonymity and not, and to make sure nobody's going to feel pressured or that they have any sort of issues with that, we don't ask for which category they fall into. We just simply let's hear are the four categories. Do you want to identify as a protective vet? Yes or no. But we don't ask anyone to say what category that they would fall into.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve the affirmative action plan.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I just want to thank you. I know that's a tremendous amount of work. It's like anything else, though. If we don't pay attention to it, then we don't really know how we're doing. And I just think that having a diverse workforce like we clearly do is just a great thing for everybody in Minnehaha County. And I would also just echo the thanks to the veterans that we employ. Minnehaha County is the great recipient of a lot of skills that people are able to learn in their military service, and we really appreciate those vets. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, next item is abatements recommended for approval. Olivia?
Yes, we have abatements recommended for approval. There are three categories, so we'll just do them in those three sections. The first, A and B, we have Richard Schmidt, Parcel 26762, 2018 property taxes in the amount of $220.74. And then we have Jared Dallin, Parcel 71393, 2018 property taxes in the amount of $1,231.28.
I'd recommend approval or make a motion to approve those two.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
And then we have C through F. They are all for the assessment freeze for 2018 property taxes. So first, we have Parcel 35164 in the amount of $754.46. Parcel 41995 in the amount of $295.19. Parcel 59362 in the amount of $1,268.66. And Parcel 71202 in the amount of $96.47.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I wonder if I could comment on that for a moment. I've had a citizen that was confused about getting the property tax, the elderly property tax freeze. He thought it would freeze his taxes. In fact, what it does is it freezes his valuation. And so if your valuation stays the same, your taxes might still go up. And if there's been no increase in your valuation since you turned 65, there's no point in applying for it. I just wanted to mention that since I've had some communication on the issue.
I appreciate that. These can be very confusing, and I think any opportunity we get to remind the public how these work is helpful. So, thank you.
All right. And then we have G through J. They are all for the South Dakota Department of Transportation, 2018 property tax exemption. So we have Parcel 44201 in the amount of $2,168.40. Parcel 44202 in the amount of $3,921.10. Parcel 53798 in the amount of $2,070.64. And Parcel 53799 in the amount of $175.82.
Entertain a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Karski?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. So we have one left.
That's an abatement for denial. Chris Lilla is here if you have questions for him. This is for yearly sush check. Parcel 88732, 2018 property taxes in the amount of $2,310.6.
Do you have any comments, Chris?
Yeah, just, again, this gentleman came in, and I advised him he's got the right to appeal or request an abatement. However, I would not be able to support it. He chose to go forward with it. He stated that he is sure that he brought an application into us. However, there is no record anywhere. We mailed him applications. We never received it back. So we can't apply something we don't know about, and so I recommended denial, and the city upheld that, so.
Madam Chair, Chris, do you believe language was an impediment in his case?
You know, I don't know. It could have been, but our letters are pretty clear. This is a pretty high-dollar home. And I don't want to stereotype, but if you're affording a level of home like that, I would assume that you're somewhat educated in the ownership of a home. I don't know. I don't want to guess, but it is a possibility. But the law states that it has to be received. We did not receive it. We mailed the applications and a letter stating to the fact. Never received one back, so we can only do what we can do.
Move to deny. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, vote, Olivia?
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so that takes us to Item 7, Notices and Requests. There are none. Item 8, Planning and Zoning Notices. There are none. Takes us to Item 9, Petition for Compromise of Lean. Good morning, Melinda.
Good morning. Melinda Storely, Commission Assistant. Before use an application to compromise lean, DPNO 86030 in the amount of $961.10. The lean represents court-appointed attorney and public defender fees for a juvenile in 2014 and 2015. The petitioner and his ex-spouse were divorced on April 30th, 2008. He has joint custody of their children and is willing to pay a portion of the lean amount. He's considering refinancing his home at the end of April and would like to know that the lean will not delay the process. Financial information was not included with the application because he has made an offer to pay 50% of the fees. Action requested is to remove the petitioner from the joint lien with payment of $480.55 of the lien, leaving the remainder of the lien in the name of the petitioner's ex-spouse.
Thank you. If the petitioner is here, they're able to say... Okay, I didn't think the petitioner was here. Anybody have any questions for Melinda?
This to be a reasonable offer, and I'd rather have a contribution back than to wait indefinitely. So I'll make a motion to agree with the petitioner and accept his offer.
Second.
Motion and a second. A roll call, vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So now is our...
Madam Chair, I'd just point out that Melinda is the only one in our staff that's here today.
And we are so thankful for that.[1279.83][1279.83](Laughter.) She was the only one in our staff here yesterday as well. So she has done a great job. So we have opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here who'd like to speak about something that's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. Seeing no one rushing for the podium, we'll go on to regular business. First item under regular business has become a regular item for us. Jason Gearman is here with an emergency management flood update and prediction for the next few days possibly.
Jason Gearman, emergency management. I don't have a lot to add as far as the flood information. Obviously, the waters went down considerably. I had the meeting with the township officials, and Monday I got them updated on the information that they need to complete their damage assessments. So if you happen to get any calls from somebody that I may have missed, it was a rather large list of people that I sent this information, but forward them to me, and I'll get them what they need to do their assessments and help them out with what I can. They did close, yesterday morning, they closed the weather, I don't know how to put it, the weather disaster, I guess. Well, a few hours later, they opened it back up again to extend through this weekend, for sure. And Sioux Falls appears to be on the uncertain list on how much snowfall will get because we're in the middle of the rain-snow mix. But if you get northern Minnehaha County, you're looking at probably over 12 inches. Minnehaha or Sioux Falls area, they're predicting 8 to 12, but just depends on how quick it melts and how many issues we'll have in the future. It looks like the forecast is in the 30s for a little bit, so it won't be a quick melt anyway, but we'll keep an eye on it. Any questions for me?
Anybody have any questions for Jason? Jason, could you just give us an update of where we are in the emergency declaration?
I completed the disaster paperwork and forwarded it on to the state's attorney's office. And just for your information, Lincoln County, I believe, was doing theirs today in front of the commission. It's not a big rush or anything like that, but hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll have it on the agenda and signed by the chair.
And could you just remind us what the impact of that is for the citizens?
Oh, that basically, it allows Minnehaha County to declare disaster, and that you're requesting the governor to also declare disaster to allow state, federal resources to flow our way to help with the townships, the cities, hopefully homeowners, which is very rare in these cases, but at least we have that information there. 211 has been collecting damage assessments over the phone. I've received five so far, I think. Many of them have been in Sioux Falls. We're also collecting the data for Sioux Falls in those. Other than that, that's just the declaration, how that works. And then what will happen is FEMA will come into our area and want to assess certain roads and work with DJ and the townships on that.
Great. All right, Commissioner Barth?
Jason, you've mentioned to me, and I saw it in the news, that the city is, of course, attempting to buy up some of the properties that are subject to, unfortunately, regular high water. Where do they get the money for that?
That's, the city must have a lot of money. I don't know.[1503.12][1503.12](Laughter.)
Well, at your leisure, after disasters are over, maybe you could work with our planning and zoning to determine some properties that we should consider.
I know Dell Rapids, for example, has tried this in the past along the river there, and I think they've tried to get to where it's a flood-prone area. However, the damage to the homes is very minimal, so it never qualifies, so they can't use that federal buyback money in that area. So people just continue to stay there and deal with it as best they can and deal with it over and over again. It's a, rivers are good places to have parks, not houses.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for being here this morning. That takes us to Item 11. We have a presentation by the Public Defender's Office. Tracy and/or Mike.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you want to do recent or future? Okay. So for recent projects for 2018 for the Public Defender's Office, we worked on a number of different projects. One would have been our trainer development program. Our senior trial attorney, Betsy Doyle and Mike Miller, went out to Gideon's Promise in Atlanta and worked on developing a program so that we could do more training within our office. As I already noted, we also have been working on over the last year, changing our case processing so that we could be more efficient in how we're processing our cases with allowing attorneys when they first come up to the felony rotation. They're working on lower-level felonies, and then allowing the more experienced attorneys to work on the more serious crimes so that they would have more time. We also spent much of our year working on the Public Defender Pilot Project to address mentally ill clients who are sitting in jail, to allow them access services through our partnership with the Southeastern Behavioral Health so that they have access to Debbie Faiini, a behavioral health navigator who essentially works with them to make sure that once they're out in the community, they follow up with their mental health assessments that they're receiving through pre-trial services with the screening that is being done through the jail. And then also to assist them with other things such as housing and applying for social security and those sorts of things. And then we've also spent much of our year working on issues related to recruitment and turnover and trying to take steps to address those things within the office. Over the last year, we also worked on a community education event to raise awareness related to mental illness in people in the community who are facing concerns related to untreated mental conditions and what that looks like when people are sitting in jail due to having a condition that results in them having contact with law enforcement. And what we can do as a community to make sure that they're accessing the resources that are available to them so that the criminal justice system doesn't essentially become a revolving door. Through that program, we collected almost $20,000, which Southeastern Behavioral Health has dedicated to using that money towards our alternative sentencing program. That program has been in effect for about two years now. And Southeastern was actually kind enough to help us with a video that we'd like to share with you. Just playing. Okay. It's my sound. It's Holly. Resentmentism. That first year the program was running, our ressentiment rate was seventy-two percent. So seventy-two percent of them did not have any new charges because they were actively engaging in their treatment plan. I was completely unaware of Southeastern Behavioral. So when our office brought in a caseworker and she explained what she was able to do, it was incredibly exciting for us to have that availability of someone right there in our office that we could send clients to or just having a resource for them to go and talk to that focuses in that area, that that's their expertise.
I think that Southeastern helps them get those next steps done when they're at a really dark point in their lives. For me, it's helping someone get better. So someone who concedes to me, I have these thoughts, I know that I did these things because of how I was feeling, I'm using meth, I can't afford my mental health treatment or, you know, the copayments or anything. Using Southeastern makes you, as an attorney, feel better. You're helping your client better themselves to not come back to here. No one wants to see someone ten years down the road or five minutes down the road with the same charge. You want to help them better themselves.
People who have mental health and chemical dependency concerns, they meet with me and we complete some evaluations with them and determine what is a good treatment plan for them. A major benefit of this is the client takes an active role. They engage in this plan versus just being imposed on a treatment or a plan from the courts. So they're actively engaged in it, so they're more likely to continue services and follow through. One of the cases that I've worked on for quite some time now was someone who has severe mental health issues, and he's been incarcerated solely because of those mental health issues.
At the time of sentencing, we got him out in treatment, so he was functioning in society, showing the judge, no, I can be better, I can do this. I'm not what you think I am, and I'm all of these other things. Because of the resources that Southeastern has been able to connect them with, I was able to convince judges that they were good candidates for probation instead of going to prison. I was able to convince them that with Southeastern's help, they could get back on their medications, start working again. I think that without Southeastern, it would have been harder to convince a judge that probation was a viable candidate for some people that I have with mental health problems.
And these specific therapies help to make changes to negative thought patterns, so we have more positive action, more positive behaviors, and more success for that individual. It can save the county and the state money by keeping these individuals out of jail and keeping them into our community and allowing them to be productive citizens and giving back to our community versus taking from our community. We recognize that humanity is important, that regardless of your mental health diagnosis, you're a person, and that's something that gets lost oftentimes when the first thing we hear is their diagnosis. And then there's that fear, that stigma, and we like to strip that away and just meet the person where they're at and treat them with the dignity that they deserve.
Some of the future projects that we're working on, increasing our recruitment, addressing the turnover that we've seen. We are going to be starting involvement to back up with the law school again. We'll be starting the Indigent Defense Practicum again this fall. We've continued with interns from USD. We have five interns that are going to be coming and working with our office this summer. We're going to be continuing with trainer development implementation, so the training that Betsy Doyle and I attended taught us how to bring back some of the training from their program and start using some of that within the office, different methods and ways to do trainings for the employees. We're also starting supervisor case reviews, and so this is something that we learned at training as well, where we're going to be spreading around some of the more serious cases and giving everybody a little bit of experience, but it's going to be a way that we're able to help sort of keep an eye on things, manage what's going on, see that things are being handled appropriately while making the most of the staff that we have available.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Tracy or Mike this morning? Commissioner Karski.
No question, just comments. Working with Tracy and Mike through the Public Defender Board, they've really gone way beyond what maybe the role of a typical public defender has been, you know, the diamond in the rough, reaching out, could be grants through different organizations, working with local Southeastern Behavioral Health, great example, to keep people out of jail and, you know, keep our expenses down. Earlier, we approved the... We went to a senior deputy defender, and it's, you know, managing her staff. We did add some attorneys. I think she's doing a great job, and I think that the office is really going in the right direction, so just want to thank you for what you've done.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I would just say, it seems to me like we still count our cases differently in all of our legal departments, and it'd be nice if we could unify that. Later on, we have a Thompson Reuters contract, and it'd be nice if we could unify that with our different legal departments too, and maybe there's a way to put a wall between yours and the state's attorneys with... Still working with the Thompson Reuters agent, but combining it maybe at a savings of a percent or something. Anyway.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate the video and the work that you guys have done with Southeastern. I think that video is a great way for us and for the public to get a little bit of insight in the folks that work in your area and, you know, some of the challenges that you and your clients face and the ways that you're trying to creatively meet some of those challenges. So, thank you very much. All right. That takes us to item twelve. Consider a motion to authorize the state's attorney's office to enter into a contract with Thompson Reuters for Westlaw Legal Services. Drew DeGroot, good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. Drew DeGroot from the state's attorney's office. Currently, the state's attorney's office is entering the second year of a contract with Thompson Reuters. Came to our attention, excuse me, through their representative, that for nine dollars and seventeen cents a month more, we could be getting a brief database. This would allow our attorneys to see appellate briefs through all fifty states and also federal. This would be a time-saving issue. It'd allow our attorneys just to see the different arguments being made by attorneys and help save some of their research time. So entering the second year, our price per month on our contract would be one thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. With this additional nine dollars and seventeen cents, it would go up to one thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-two cents, and it would also add another year onto the contract. I don't know if you're familiar, about a year ago, Drew DeGroot had negotiated, renegotiated our Westlaw contract at a savings of close to four hundred dollars a month. So this would just keep that price point down and add another year and also add additional services to our attorneys. So what the state's attorney's office is seeking is authorization to enter into that three-year contract.
Are there any questions for Drew? Commissioner Barth.
I would just point out that I was stimulated to ask the public defender that question about Thompson Reuters by seeing this as our next item, because every year I see these bills come in for these different departments, and that would encourage us all to find ways to economize it. And I actually know a fellow at Thompson Reuters who told me, "Talk to your agent," when I asked him about it. So obviously, I support this, and I'll make a motion to sign this contract, but let's work together to reduce our overall costs.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This takes us to item thirteen. Consider a motion to declare a two thousand and eighteen Ford Explorer involved in a collision as surplus to receive insurance payouts. Joe Bosman, you've been here before.
Yes, I have. Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman with the Sheriff's Office. Another request this morning, we had a rough month of March with some patrol fleet vehicles. In this one, we had a two thousand and eighteen Ford Explorer that rear-ended on Interstate Ninety while had its lights activated, was working in an active accident scene where a semi had jackknifed, and so it was trying to, you know, slow down other cars from hitting a tanker truck and end up taking a hit itself. The deputy turned out okay, a little sore out of it, but unfortunately, our vehicle, which was one of our newer ones, got totaled out and the repair estimate was over twenty-three thousand dollars. Progressive Insurance, representing the other vehicle, has found themselves liable by their driver's actions and have decided to offer a payout amount of twenty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-five cents in exchange for the title of the totaled vehicle. Our anticipation is, when we get the City of Sioux Falls vehicle bid, which we usually use to purchase our new vehicles for this year, I will probably, asking at that point, to increase our purchasing authority by one with the revenue sourcing of this insurance payout, but that'll be at a set later date. So at this time, I'm just asking the commission to declare county asset number one zero zero two five, which is a two thousand and eighteen Ford Explorer, as surplus to Progressive Insurance in exchange for an insurance claim settlement check.
Commissioner Karski.
First, I was going to ask, is everybody okay? So I'm glad to hear the deputy, other than being a little sore, is okay. Our first responders, you know, it's a dangerous job at times, and just need people to be careful, so I'm glad to hear he's good or the deputy's in good shape, he or she. Question, we put a lot of equipment into these vehicles, so when we give it back to basically progressives buying this from us, we pull all our equipment out and that type of thing, or what?
Yep, that's exactly correct. So the prisoner partitions, the radar units, the in-car camera systems, the center councils with the radios, and all the law enforcement equipment gets taken out and it's transferable into the next vehicle so that we don't have to buy new equipment. The light bar, that'll all come, be transferred over to the new vehicle. Also, in this payout amount is I provide them the cost of what it is to remove that equipment and install it, and that's also built into the twenty-six thousand that they're going to pay for, because that is a cost to us that we have to incur as a result.
Good to know. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Benega.
I just have a question on why we make you come back when you replace the vehicle. It seems to me we ought to be able to do that in one motion and save everybody a bunch of time and effort.
And in this case, it was, you know, we just want to make sure that we get authorized in our budget to purchase vehicles, but at that time, when we come to purchase it, do the amount of vehicles, and it's way over the bid amount, it's one of those things that I want to make, we bring forward to make sure that the commission is clear that we are following the state and county policies on the bids. So it's going to fall into that because one vehicle would be over the bid amount, and we're not ready to... The state bid is sometimes higher than the city bid, so we're just going to wait probably about a month, and then we can get in line with the city bid. I see what you're saying, though, yes.
It seems like a waste of time, but I understand.
Commissioner Barth.
I really appreciate you coming to this, talking about the lights being on. Nationally, there's been a large number of crashes where emergency vehicles are getting smucked even though they're out there. Are the light bars that we're using these days enough? I've seen some school buses that have the arm come out and it's got flashing lights on the arm, and I've seen them where they strobe the red lights, too. I mean, what can we do to protect our emergency folk out there on these highways with speed limits of eighty, people driving eighty-nine?
Yeah, it can be very challenging at times, and the light bars we have, they're a very bright LED light. They change colors, they have different flash patterns on them, exactly like what you're saying. The unfortunate thing that we can't change is drivers' distractions and attention spans and the reaction time and the condition of the roadway that... I think in this case, it was a slippery road. Driver was overdriving the road conditions, and he was, had cited for his overdriving road conditions and losing his control of his vehicle, but we try as much as we can to position our vehicles, to make sure our vehicles and our officers are safe while still affecting to protect the scene of the accident and the other people down that way. In this case, actually, our deputy was assisting, it was the South Dakota Highway Patrol was dealing with the accident, and our deputy was there, and we could stage our vehicles a little bit further back to provide early warning to these drivers, these motorists, before they come upon an accident scene. And so it was one of those things, if our officer was off to the side of the shoulder, lights activated, and the car lost control and started spinning and slid over and bullseye.
I'll text that to some friends of mine later.
Anything further? Not to entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Oops, sorry, roll call vote.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Now, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks for coming this morning.
Safe.
That takes us to item fourteen. Consider bid results and recommendation to reject all bids for project number MC sixteen dash zero two. DJ Boothy, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothy, Highway Superintendent. We had a bid opening on March twenty-seventh, and two bids were received for the replacement of two structures. We had initially had time provisions in this project for replacement to be completed by two thousand and nineteen, and the bids that we received were not very favorable. This is likely due to the construction season. Contractors already have their projects filled up within their schedule, and so they didn't necessarily have a lot of time available to complete the projects in two thousand and nineteen. We've had conversations with multiple contractors and our consultant about the option to redo our time provision for the contract, allow some winter work over the winter, and then also have a completion date into two thousand and twenty for them to be able to construct one or both of these bridges in the two thousand and twenty construction season. We feel like we could save quite a few, quite a bit of budget by allowing that change in the time provision, and so we are recommending that the commission reject the bids that we receive for this contract, and we will adjust the time provision accordingly and re-advertise for a new bid opening, probably in May of this year. Stand by for any questions.
Commissioner Karski.
Just a good job of being flexible and taking a deeper look at this one, DJ. It is hundreds of thousands of dollars potential savings for us, so it's not that we're rejecting this outright, we're rejecting it and going to go back and redo it with a little bit of extra work, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, I'd like to mention DJ Boothy here. He and I went and visited a farmer on the western edge of our county who had seventy acres drowning currently with the issue appearing to be drainage in McCook County, and so it was a little bit of an odd situation, and it still is odd, but I appreciate DJ going out there and looking at it with me.
We appreciate both of you going out and looking at it, so... That takes us to item fifteen. Consider resolution in support of the Highway Department's participation in the South Dakota DOT Bridge Inspection Program.
Commissioners, every two years, we are required to inspect our bridges that are on the National Bridge Inventory System and box covers every four years, and so every year, we do about half of our structures, which equates to about a hundred structures every single year. And the state allows us to participate in their inspection program with the federal government, which in turns allows us to have an eighty-twenty matching program for the fees for the consultant that performs those inspections. And so as part of the state program, they require the commission to pass a resolution selecting our consultant and electing to participate in their program, and this year, we are asking...
He and I went and visited a farmer on the western edge of our county who had 70 acres drowning currently with the issue appearing to be drainage in McCook County, and so it was a little bit of an odd situation, and it still is odd, but I appreciate DJ going out there and looking at it with me.
We appreciate both of you going out and looking at it, so. That takes us to item 15. Consider resolution in support of the Highway Department's participation in the South Dakota DOT Bridge Inspection Program.
Commissioners, every two years, we are required to inspect our bridges that are on the National Bridge Inventory System and box covers every four years, and so every year, we do about half of our structures, which equates to about 100 structures every single year, and the state allows us to participate in their inspection program with the federal government, which in turns allows us to have an 80/20 matching program for the fees for the consultant that performs those inspections. And so as part of the state program, they require the Commission to pass a resolution selecting our consultant and electing to participate in their program, and this year, we are asking the Commission to pass this resolution identifying Civil Design Inc. of Brookings as the consultant to perform the inspections and authorize the Highway Department to move forward with the DOT and the inspection program. I'll stand by for any questions.
Any questions?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. I just, you know, a lot of times, we like to express our concern about our funding sources and lack of state support, but I would like to thank the state, that's a great program in that they support our required efforts and needs to get these bridges inspected, so thank you. So that takes us to, I think you're all done then, DJ.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to what was item, or it is still item 19. Authorize the chairperson to sign a temporary construction easement with the City of Sioux Falls. Melinda, thanks for...
Good morning, Melinda Storely, Commission Assistant. As you mentioned earlier, some of our staff is out, so I'm presenting this for Craig Dewey. The City of Sioux Falls would like to construct an ADA accessibility sidewalk improvements along the northeast and southeast corner of Sixth Street and Minnesota Avenue and is requesting a temporary construction easement on the land owned by Minnehaha County. The legal description of the proposed easement is portions of Lot 1 in Block 1 of J.L. Phillips' addition to Sioux Falls and Lot 9 in Block 19 of Brookings and Edmunds' addition to Sioux Falls, all in Minnehaha County, South Dakota, described as Parcels L. and M. as shown on Plan Sheet Number E13, attached and made part of the easement as if set forth in full. And again, the action requested is to authorize the chair to sign the temporary construction easement with the city.
Thank you. Any questions for Melinda?
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again. That takes us to item 21, Liaison Reports. Any liaison reports this morning?
Madam Chair, just, the museum is canceling their volunteer appreciation banquet for this Thursday because of the impending storm, and it's going to be rescheduled for May.
May 9th, correct?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Any other liaison reports this morning? Okay, that takes us to new business. Any new business? Any old business? I would consider a motion to recess the Minnehaha County Commission meeting.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We'll recess until shortly after 10:00, and then we'll reconvene and go into executive session.